Ready? Okay. I'd like to call the meeting to order. So we can stand for a moment of silence and then the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk, could we have the roll call, please?
Mr. Jamie Girardi.
Here.
Mr. Christopher Poole. Mr. John Moody.
Here.
Mr. Matthew Lund. Mr. Derek Hotlitt.
Here.
Mr. Chris Williams.
Here.
And Chairman Charles Gray.
Here.
Thank you.
Go for publication, please.
The items were advertised in the Tampa Bay Times on May 1st, 2024, and June 5th, 2024, or by affidavit of certified mail-in and fax mailing.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes, please?
Motion to approve minutes.
Second.
Can I identify those minutes?
April 18th, 2024.
The motion is second and further discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, like sign. Thank you. So, anybody who plans to give testimony today or come up and speak, if you'd please stand, raise your right hand and be sworn. Stand, raise your right hand. Be sworn.
Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give if the truth tells you that? Thank you.
Okay, I want to just give you a little bit of information about the meeting in case you haven't been here before. We're the Planning Commission, we're appointed by the Board of County Commissioners, and we meet twice monthly. I'm sure it was a local planning agency, and we hold public hearings, transmit to the Board of County Commissioners recommendations on comprehensive plan amendments, the Land Development Code amendments, rezonings, and conditional use requests. The Planning Commission is the final decision-making body for certain alternative standard requests. However, final decisions may be appealed to the Board of County Commissioners. If anyone is in opposition to any recommendation that we make to the County Commission, it's important for you to attend the appropriate County Commission meeting. We do have a list of those meetings. If you're interested, you can get them from the staff up here. For those of you who aren't familiar with these meetings, we have three sections usually. We have continuances, and those are items where the staff typically or the applicant has requested a continuance for any number of reasons. It's been our policy to grant those requests for continuance unless they're extenuating circumstances. We have the consent agenda, and those are items that where the staff are we have not received any letters or notices of objection or questions, and they go on to consent. We go through those one at a time. If there's something that's on consent that you'd like to speak about, as we read it off, just raise your hand and we'll pull it from consent and put it on the regular items. And those regular items will be discussed in full. The applicants will have a chance to come up and tell you what their request is for. Members of the audience who have signed up will have a chance to come up and state their concerns or their questions. And then the applicant will come back up and try to answer them the best they can. Applicants will have three minutes to make their presentation, and respondents will have three minutes to ask their questions. Then the applicant will have five minutes to respond to those questions. If the applicant has requested in writing at least 24 hours prior to this meeting for extra time, we may grant that extra time. I don't think we have had any of this time.
No request, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. We also allow for public comment. If you, if there's anybody here that wants to speak about a subject not on today's agenda, before we start, we'll invite you up to speak to whatever it is concerning you. Please put any phones or beepers or anything like that on silent position so we don't interrupt somebody that's speaking. So, before that, then, is there anyone here to speak something that's not on today's agenda? Okay, I don't see anyone.
Mr. Chair, just for the record, we did have someone signed up to speak on WebEx, but that gentleman is not on.
Okay, thank you. All right. So, I think we covered everything. And we can begin.
Thank you, good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Planning Commission members. Denise Hernandez, Planning and Economic Growth Department. We're going to start with item PC 2, which is PEG 24-7739. It's a zoning amendment, Fletcher, MPUD, Mary L. Fletcher, Vocable Trust, and Richard D. Fletcher. The request is to continue the item to the July 25th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting at 1:30 in Newport Ritchie.
Okay, and I think that's the only continuance request?
Yes, sir, it is.
All right, so do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
You have a motion and a second. And the applicant present? Okay, and anyone here to talk about this one? All right, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, like sign.
Following item is PC 3, PEG 24-7797. It's a special exception in the name of R&amp;J Properties of Pasco, Inc., Disbrow Duplex. It's for a special exception for a duplex in an R4 high-density residential district. Comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions as included in your agenda packet.
All right. Is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? The applicant is not present. I'm sorry?
He's here, I think.
He's present.
He's present, he is. He's right there.
Okay. Thought you were hiding back there. It's okay. Anyone here to object? Okay, so no objections? Move to the next one.
Item PC 4 is PEG 24-7789. It's a special exception in the name of St. Verena Coptic Orthodox Church, Inc., St. Verena Private K-5 School. It's for a special exception for a private school in a C2 general commercial district and MF1 multiple-family medium-density district. Comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions as included in your agenda packet.
All right. Is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? See no objection? Next, next.
Mr. Chair, item PC 5, which is PEG 24-7790, will be polled. As will item PC 6, which is PEG 24-7792. And also PC 7, which is PEG 7777, will be polled as well.
Who are doing so well?
We're now moving to item PC 8. On this item, you are sitting as the local planning agency, and that is PEG 24-0218. It's a comprehensive plan amendment, CPAS 2322, Ernest Drive. It's for a comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use, changing it from ROR Retail Office Residential and RES 3, residential to three dwelling units per gross acre to comm commercial. If you would please take public comment on this item, and we're asking that you find it consistent with the comprehensive plan and recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners.
Okay. Who's here to speak on this one? Anyone? Okay. Do I have a motion?
Yes, that's the end of your consent.
Motion to approve items PC 3, PC 4, and PC 8 on the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, like sign.
Right, so Liam Devine will be presenting item PC 5, but I just wanted to let you know that once PC 5, 6, and PC 7 are presented, we would like to move on to item PC 10 ahead of item PC 9, please.
Okay. Whatever you say.
Just being your master of ceremony here.
You're the master of everything. Okay.
Good afternoon.
I hope so.
Liam Devine, Planning and Economic Growth Department. This is PC 5. Let me go back one. PEG 24-7790 in the name of Bayonet Land LLC, Bayonet Gardens. It is a Euclidean zoning amendment from MF1 multi-family medium-density district and rezoning to MF3 multi-family high-density district. The future land use classification is RES 24 under the comprehensive plan, and the applicant proposes to develop the property with 294 multi-family age-restricted dwelling units, with 50% of the units being set aside for those incomes of 80% or less AMI in conformance with the MF3 multi-family high-density district standards. And the subject site location is on the southwest corner of the intersection of Lake Shore Boulevard and Dallas Drive and Community Court, approximately 600 feet west of 5A Road. The site is located in the West Market area and the urban service area. Here is our context map of the area. Here is our zoomed-in aerial. And our surrounding future land use to the north is ROR RES 6 and RES 24. To the east is RES 6 and RES 24. To the south is RES 6. And to the west is ROR and RES 6. The surrounding zoning is PUD and MF3 to the north. To the east is PUD, MF3, and PO2. To the south is AC, PUD, and to the west is MF1 and MF2. The subject site is undeveloped on approximately 19.98 acres. Access to the property is from Lake Shore Boulevard and Dallas Drive. And the subject site is located 660 feet west of a planned conceptual trail along 5A. And this is coming with recommendation for approval with deed restrictions as provided in your agenda packet. I'm going to list some of the deed restrictions. There will be a maximum of 294 multi-family dwelling units. There shall be 147 affordable dwelling units set aside for those incomes of 80% or less. There shall be 114 age-restricted, 55-plus dwelling units. The 180 units that are non-age-restricted shall be a minimum of four stories in height. And all age-restricted dwelling units shall comply with LDC Section 1302.1D. And it also includes the live-local restriction for tax exemption as well. And again, this is coming with recommendation approval from Planning and Economic Growth Department. I'm here if you have any questions.
Okay, anybody have questions?
And Planning Commission members, just to add to Liam's fabulous presentation, that those deed restrictions are basically in order to comply with the subarea policy for Bayonet Gardens, which is Flu Policy 7.1.73.
Thank you, Denise.
Does the subarea policy include the minimum height?
No, so where that minimum height is coming from is actually coming from the timing and phasing and trip generation. So I believe they're around a little less than 1,200 daily trips. So by doing mid-rise instead of low-rise, it actually reduces the number of trips. So if they did low-rise under the ITE code, they would generate more than 1,200 daily trips and would trigger an MPUD rezon.
Do you have an explanation for that? Why the height of the building would affect traffic?
So I'm not a transportation planner or expertise. I'm sure somebody is here who can answer that, but that is coming through our ITE code.
If you live higher, you're less likely to go down and get in your car.
I mean, when you have to leave, you have to leave.
Door dash.
Door dash. Okay.
Yeah, makes sense. Well, is there a transportation person that's going to?
Yes, we have several folks online. I don't know, and they're all elevated in order to speak. So whoever would like to speak on this item, just unmute yourself and please explain.
Good afternoon, this is Stacy Burgess with Development Review Department. Can you rephrase your question again? I do have the information up in front of me. What was your question?
I think Liam, Stacy, this is John Moody. I think Liam answered the question. I do have one question out of curiosity. The ITE category that allows or reduces traffic for higher-rise apartments, how old is that study?
This study, let's see.
When does the ITE manual say the studies were conducted? And where?
Let me see. You're not referring to the Otis, the online ITE? You're referring to what the applicant has provided?
I don't know. In the ITE manual, they generally tell you that the rates were established based on X many number of studies conducted during these years in these locations.
Got it. So what I could do is, if you guys can come back to me, I can load up on there because I'm here in the study, but I would have to go back online and I can get that information for you and just kind of come back to me with that.
Sounds good.
Okay?
Okay.
All right, thank you so much.
Any other questions? If not, is the applicant present?
Thank you, Shelley Johnson, 6400 Madison Street. And I have been sworn. Yeah, we are in agreement with obviously the deed restrictions and all of the additional things that they've included in those deed restrictions because it is a Euclidean. We have been at work at this for a while. We do have that subarea policy that's applicable, and it is in compliance with that. So, but we are here, my client is here, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Shelley, can you just help me clarify?
Sure.
Couple of things. I'm trying to figure out the math here. What's 147 affordable dwelling units for income at or below 80% AMI? A minimum of 114 age-restricted, 55 years age or older? And then 180 that are non-age-restricted, 55 age or older, shall be a minimum of four stories in height? But there's only 300 or 294 units? I'm trying to understand.
Okay.
Sorry, yes, because you can have some that are age-restricted and affordable.
Okay, so I think you might have just answered my next question. And that is going to be, are the 55 years of age or older reserved for elderly or older people? Because I'm older than 55.
Could have fooled me.
80% of AMI.
I'm sorry, say that again?
I think you just answered the question. So not all of the age-restricted units are for 80% AMI?
Correct. So potentially, you could have, you would have 140. And hypothetically, I don't know what the exact unit count. I don't even know if the applicant would know that at this point. But you could potentially have...
And this is just they are?
You would...
Don't speak from the floor, can't get that on the record.
You would have to have 147 80% or less. Some of them could be age-restricted, some don't. And then they could potentially have market rate apartments as there as well.
Okay. Thanks. All right. Okay, anything else for the applicant? Okay.
Well, let me just, to follow up on Mr. Moody's question, let me just ask the applicant. In reality, are you just going to be building one building that's at least four stories? It's going to have all of it in it? Is that...
That I don't know. So I would have to ask my client to come up to answer that question. But it will all be affordable, even though, you know, our loom allows us to have a little bit that's not affordable in market rate. So it may end up that way.
I'm not questioning what you committed to. I'm just asking, in reality, are you really just looking to build one building that's got all of these units? Or are you going to have multiple buildings?
Sean Smith, 1949 Blue Pond Drive. I work for McDowell Housing Partners. So we've already submitted a site plan application. We'll be following up with building permit application for the Phase 1. This is going to be done in three phases. So Phase 1 is 114 units. It's, will be all senior, 55-plus, all affordable, 100% at 60% AMI or below. And so, and then Phase 2 will be somewhere between 100 and 180 units. And then if we do a third phase, it would be to, you know, to get to the 294. But as of right now, it's a minimum of two phases and possibly a third.
Okay, so you are building three different buildings then?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Are you saying that ultimately, regardless of what the approval, ultimately, all of them will be affordable?
That is our game plan.
80% or less AMI?
Yes, sir. I mean, that's primarily our business, is doing workforce and affordable housing. So, yeah, that would be the goal.
But the first phase is 60% AMI or lower?
Yes, sir.
And senior? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, anything? All right, thank you very much. All right, I think that's it for the applicant. Do we have anybody else here that wants to speak? Do you want to speak?
Yes, on this item, we have Thomas Cook, signed up to speak.
Okay. Thomas Cook?
Thomas Cook?
Thomas Cook is who we have signed up to speak on this item. John Burkett, I'm sorry. I apologize. Thomas Cook is on the next item. I apologize, sir.
I just had a couple of questions.
Before you get started, we just need your full name and your address.
John William Burkett, Jr. I live at 8052 Woodbrook Court, Hudson, Florida.
Thank you. I know you've been sworn.
Has an actual recent traffic study been done?
I don't think we know the answer, but we'll ask that.
Excuse me. Just go ahead and ask your questions. We'll make a note, or he'll make a note.
Okay.
And then we'll get them answered for you.
Is there been a wildlife impact study done? Because I have coyotes in my neighborhood that have been displaced. There has been some clearing in the land already. And will there be a natural area buffer between lakeside woodlands and these new buildings? A four-story building, not really going to matter. They're going to see over it anyway. My concern is for my community. I happen to be the president. And I would also like a completion date on Phase 1.
Okay.
Okay? And will there be amenities for the affordable housing that's not 55-plus for younger families? Like playgrounds, stuff like that? Because right now, I have three communities using my stuff, our stuff. We have a severe traffic problem in our neighborhood. Everyone cuts through it. And I'm afraid that it's only going to increase. And I think I've done enough damage.
All right. We'll try to get those questions answered. I'm sure he was making notes there. I hope he was making notes, and he can respond to your questions. Okay?
Now, what is the AMI? One last question. What is the AMI in my area?
Annual average median income is what it stands for.
Yeah, I know. But what is it?
Well, it depends on which threshold you're talking about.
My area, what's the dollars?
Well, there's 60% AMI, there's 80% AMI. I believe it's...
I think he's asking what's the median income.
David, you know, it's like 70,000 or something like that.
70?
Well, we work off of a county number, not neighborhoods. And it's about $78,000 a year.
78,000?
Yes, sir.
So 80%...
For the household.
They would have to make...
No, that's the average monthly income for a typical Pasco household.
Okay.
And it's 60% of that.
I think you meant yearly income.
Yeah, not monthly.
That would be yearly income.
That's annual income.
Which is it, 80 or 60% of AMI?
There's two different phases, he was saying. So there was one, the first phase was 60% AMI, and then the second phase was 80%.
Well, the deed restriction requires it to be 80% of AMI.
Correct.
80%.
That's, if he wants to do lower threshold, he could. But the county's not requiring anything less than, anything less than 80%.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Just to give you a scale of magnitude, half the employees in Pasco County make 80% of AMI or less.
Yeah, I know. I know many Pasco employees.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is anyone else? If not, you want to come up and respond to those specific questions, very specific questions?
Yeah, thank you. Shelley Johnson, 6400 Madison Street. And I have been sworn again. To answer the traffic, yeah, there was an updated traffic study that was done for the Euclidean zoning, for the numbers that are in front of you today. As far as a buffer, I think if you look at the aerial on this site, it's actually surrounded by right-of-way, lakeside woodlands, Boulevard and Drive, and then Dallas Drive on the other side. It kind of sits in an island. But of course, when they, you know, do their site plan, they're going to have to comply with the landscape buffers along those right-aways. So there will be a landscape buffer pursuant to the county code. I think the other question was with regards to any of the units that are built that are not age restricted. Those phases, of course, would have to comply with county code if there's, you know, neighborhood parks requirements and those kinds of things. So those would all be built internally to the site. So I don't think there would be any question about them utilizing other neighborhoods, parks, and things like that, I think is what the question was.
So they'll have their own recreation facilities?
Yeah, yeah. They would have to for, you know, per the code, if they're, you know, especially on the non-age restricted portion of it. As far as when the building would be completed, I'll have to let my client answer that question. I don't have an answer to that.
Shelley, with the traffic study, did it require any off-site road improvements or access improvements?
It did not trigger any substandard road or off-site improvements. And then the access, obviously, they'll look at that at site plan in terms of any access improvements. But I don't believe Steve indicated at that point there had been any, so...
Or no turn lanes or anything like that?
I don't, yeah, I don't think that's been drilled down yet, but it will be obviously when they go to site plan. But yeah, there's no, it didn't trigger any substandard road, or it was under the threshold, so...
And I know the answer to this too, but I know the gentleman that came up spoke, mentioned wildlife study.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, we did do a cultural assessment on this particular property, and we also did a wildlife study. So both were submitted to the county and reviewed, so...
Okay. You want to come up again, sir, and give us your estimate of completion date?
Yes. Yes, yes. So as I indicated, oh, sorry, Sean Smith, 1949 Blue Pond Drive. So as I indicated earlier, we've already submitted a site plan application. To your question, Mr. Moody, during the pre-application process, there were comments made about the condition of Dallas Road. And we've already been notified that we are going to need to repave, grind down and repave all of Dallas Road all the way to 5A, which is well past our site, right? I mean, our site stops 800...
I'm sorry. Could you repeat that? Because he was involved in the conversation.
I'm sorry?
Sir? Sir? This is material to your question. You want to...
Oh, so, yes. I was just saying that during the pre-application process, we did receive comments from traffic, and they did indicate that they would want us to grind down and repave all of Dallas Court from our site to 5A. So that is, you know, something that we are preparing to do. There were no comments regarding Lake Shore. But again, you know, our site plan has been submitted. We have not received full comments yet. So when we do, if that's, you know, if that's something that comes up, we will deal with that.
What class buffer is going to be required around the site?
I'm not sure. I apologize, Mr. Gray.
Do you have any idea, John or Jamie?
So Dallas Drive actually becomes Lake Shore? I'm just looking at it.
Yeah. So, yeah, so Dallas, and then the rest is, yes, Lake Shore all the way up to 5A.
5A, okay. Just clarifying.
Will be redoing all of that.
Mr. Gray, the answer on the buffers, I guess Brad can correct me if I'm wrong. Along the street, it's, there is a type D, D1 buffer. And then, I'm not sure exactly on the answer, were they abut to lakeside woodlands? But I see that their property line that abuts lakeside woodlands is going through a lake. And I'm guessing they probably can't, they're not going to plant a buffer in the middle of a lake.
Right. And we've also purchased, the red outline only shows the original 19.9 acre site. But to the south, those other two parcels, we've already, we're under contract on those. And in our site plan that's already been submitted, that will be a master retention site with a walking path for the entire community. Again, so there will be no buildings going there. That'll be strictly a large seven-acre retention pond. That will be, that will serve as the master retention for the entire three phases or two phases, however we develop the 20 acres. And then also have a walking trail and benches that'll be, you know, accessible to the community.
Are the building plans already designed?
Yes. We are, our 100% set, which is what we would submit, is due from our architect on July 12th. So that's...
Four-story building?
Yes, sir. It'll be one four-story elevator service building, and then a detached, roughly 5,000-square-foot clubhouse, swimming pool, pickleball courts. Of course, I think we brought up the neighborhoods and recreation. We'll be maintaining all the green space that'll be required. We've been in connection with Pasco County the whole time. Ms. Che, I believe her name is. And, yep. So regarding the, he asked about the listed species. As Ms. Johnson pointed out, we did have that done. We, you know, came back clean with the exception of a lot of gopher tortoises. And we are currently in the process of working with the Fish and Wildlife to relocate those and what those expenses are going to be. So...
Okay.
Anything else?
Not from me. Anybody else up here?
Nope. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
I think we have your answer from Ms. Burgess, who's on the line.
Ms. Burgess?
Yes. So, yes. So for the ITE, it's based on 11 studies for mid-rise and 22 for the low-rise. So that's what ITE is providing for multifamily.
Hey, I don't think we can hear you too well. So can you try again, please?
Okay. Okay. So for ITE, there are 11 studies for the mid-rise and 22 for low-rise. Did that come through okay?
Yes. And the mid-rise was the four stories and up?
I believe so. I kind of limited with the information in front of me, but that's what I have right now. It's just kind of given me...
And did you have a date when those studies were completed?
Just because of the resources that I have in front of me, it would take a while. So I'm sorry that I don't have it just at hand. So, but for right now, that's what I can give you, you know, just an idea for right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else, John? Anybody?
Nope.
There. Okay. All right. If there's no one else to speak, yeah, motion. Silence is deafening.
I'm a little frustrated with the whole traffic thing, that we're going to have a minimum of four stories in height because of some ITE declaration that I think probably some of us up here think is baloney, that mid-rise apartments, four stories generate less traffic than three-story apartments. And my preference, in deference to the neighbors, is to limit the height to three stories, not four stories. But the gentleman already has invested in the building plans. And it's kind of a damned if you do and damned if you don't.
Well, and I'm just going to comment, though, in response, that he's building an affordable housing project. He may need that density and that height to get to the rents that he needs to get to.
I understand that, but that doesn't mean that we have to just ignore the concerns of the neighbors too. So that, but...
I think the logic is, if there's any logic to any of it, is that, you know, if you live on the fourth floor, you're going to go back to your car and drive somewhere as infrequently as possible, just because it's going to be less attractive than if you're on the second floor or the first floor.
I mean, I don't think the ITE makes assumptions about people's behavior. They actually watch it, and they count traffic in and out of these things. In my experience, a lot of these studies were done 30 years ago, and, you know, they may not be current, and they may have been done in, you know, some crazy location out from 100 miles from nowhere. Unfortunately, staff can't tell us right now what that's the case, but...
Well, I can't, but I wonder if there's some of these mid-rise structures that they studied were in urban environments that didn't really have a lot of vehicular travel.
What I was trying to find out is what, you know, what's the nature?
That was the reason, wasn't it? Because it took them too long to get down from the fourth floor? It was, the areas they studied just didn't really have a lot of vehicular travel, just because of the environment, urban environment they were in.
Well, so, let's go back to why the purpose of why that assumption was made. It was made for purposes of a traffic study. So it may be that even if they assumed three stories, that it would have shown the level of service on the roadways was fine anyway. So I'm not sure this is, it seems like almost an academic, I understand your concern about wanting to limit the height, but in terms of the traffic study, it may not have made a difference whether it was, they assumed three stories or four stories. I mean, we don't have Steve Henry here to confirm it. Is he here or available? I guess we can ask Stacy. Would the traffic study results have been any different, Tracy, if they had assumed She's still there?
She doesn't have the... Yeah, I'm still here. I was just kind of looking through their study. On this side, I'm just having trouble with the ITE, the website, because we usually get that information on there. But I'm just looking at their study and wanted to look at their V over C ratio. And let's see here. As far as the capacity, you know, for what we're looking for on 5A road, they're like 0.51 for the road. So they're using half of the capacity on that 5A road.
So you're saying that there's adequate capacity regardless of how many stories they assumed?
At this point, with the limited information that I have right now, that would be my assumption, that they would still be able to do that. But I would have to, you know, sit down and look at that a little bit more. But I'm just looking at the capacity.
David, hey, this is Essen. I'll try to answer your question. So based on the trip generating...
Essen, you cut out.
Yeah, Essen, hold on a minute. David, this, David.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to ask a rhetorical question of our traffic engineering folks. From a planning context, we're aware that age-restricted housing, especially senior citizen, generates less trips per household? And was that taken into account on timing and phasing?
That's a good point.
Well, the timing and phase analysis is in our packet, and I think it was. I don't know, so, I don't, they can answer themselves, but...
The applicant testified that the reason they agreed to the minimum of four stories was to avoid being forced into an MPUD. Didn't have to do with whether or not they needed to do road improvements or...
Okay. I understand, Mr. Chairman.
And to answer the question, it's on page 27 of 115 of the traffic study. It did account for mid-rise and then also senior adult housing.
Yeah, it looked like the senior adult housing, it was about 0.25 trips per unit per day. And then the multifamily was 0.39 trips per unit per day. So it was a little bit of a higher trip count for the 180 multifamily portion of the project.
Well, maybe. That's my personal issue, but this isn't an MPUD, and probably Denise can probably just put this to bed for me, but this is the urban service area.
Absolutely. That's what I was about to say.
There's no height limitation.
There's no maximum building height in the urban service area for multifamily projects or commercial projects.
I'm just saying, I hate to see us use values out of some book to make arbitrary decisions like that.
Through a minimum height requirement.
This is a case of, I think it is what it is.
So is that a motion?
Can I move "it is what it is"? I will move to approve. I've made my comments. Thank you.
I'll second that.
Having a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Hold on, favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
A opposed, like sign. Okay. Thank you. Welcome back again. You again.
You're in the hot seat again.
PC6, PEG 24-7792. And the name... PC6, PEG 24-7792, in the name, and I'm gonna apologize now how I say this, but I'm gonna try my very best, Shaw Sa Chen Kay and Samalie Shiresta. It's a Euclidean zoning amendment, rezoning from AR1 Agriculture Residential District to PO1 Professional Office District. The future land use classification is Res 3 under the Comprehensive Plan, and the applicant proposes to develop the property in conformance with the PO1 Professional Office District standards for development. The subject site is located on the south side of State Road 54, approximately 400 feet west of Meadowbrook. And the site is located in the South Market area and the urban service area. Here is our context map. Here is our zoomed-in aerial. The surrounding future land use to the northeast, south, and west is all Res 3. The surrounding zoning is AC and MPUD to the north. To the east is AR1, to the south is AR1, and to the west is AR1. The subject site is undeveloped on approximately .41 of an acre. Access to the property is from State Road 54, and the subject site is located adjacent to an existing State Road 54 trail to the north. And there are no deed restrictions with this rezoning, and this is coming with a recommendation for approval from Planning and Economic Growth Department. I'm here if you have any questions.
Okay, any questions? All right, is the applicant present? Is anyone here to object? Okay.
Good afternoon. Sandra Bradberry, Northside Engineering, which is 300 South Belcher Road, Clearwater, Florida. The owner of the property would like to put a medical office facility on the site. Since its only access is on and off of State Road 54, the owner believes that this would be a perfect place to put it. There is a big easement behind the property going to the neighborhoods to the south of the property. I am here to answer any questions.
Is there, like, a site plan for the medical office?
We submitted two to staff to let them review. Either one of those choices would be amenable to the owner.
Can you put the aerial up so we can see?
Let me try to ask the question a different way. The site's .41 acres, and medical office is a heavy parking user, so I'm just trying to figure out how much medical office we're talking about by the time we provide the parking and the retention.
It would be for a single doctor's office, and with the site plan we did present, we did show adequate parking for that square footage.
What was it?
I can pull out one of mine, if you guys have an aerial that you could...
Maybe just, I don't care, I don't wanna review the site plan or see. I'm just trying to get an idea, are we talking about 1,000 square feet of medical office or...
I'm pulling the pre-app notes to see what was, I think that's what you are speaking of, the pre-app notes. I'll give you, give me about two minutes.
Sure.
Is that an access easement behind there?
That's what I was wondering, what kind of easement is that for? It looks like it's a...
And is that access easement improved?
Right. I can't tell.
Is it paved?
It's actually a drainage easement. It's not an access easement.
So, your access would come from 54?
It separates this property to the neighborhood to the south.
So, is that a ditch?
Yes, it's a ditch. And the applicant was amenable to putting 2,800 square feet up to 4,600 square feet onto the site.
Okay.
Would have adequate parking for both.
And how was it accessed?
Off of State Road 54.
Okay, directly from 54.
Any other questions?
No.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, listen. Here with the questioner has to say. Yeah, if you have questions, come on up and introduce yourself and give us your address.
Liam Devine, I just wanted to answer the question really quick. You asked how many parking spaces. It was 14 spaces in the conceptual they provided with their pre-app, and it was 1 ADA including with that 14.
Just trying to get idea of the scale of this thing, since it's a small lot, that's all.
So, if we have your name and address, please?
Thomas Cook, 17260 Rain Tree Road, in Vinceville as well. I just wanted to stand and voice my opposition to this consent agenda. The, this lot is residential, in a residential neighborhood, is owned in a residential neighborhood. We've lived there for quite some time, have been residents in Pasco County for quite some time. It is a vacant lot, and we've always been understanding that we may have neighbors there, but not a office. The property can be rezoned and then sold. Once it's rezoned and sold, we don't know what's gonna go there. Could be medical office, could be an engineer, could be a methadone clinic. That drainage easement is a small ditch, which is dry 80% of the year. I'm the immediate neighbor adjacent to that. My kids play in the yard. We have no issues within our neighborhood, and I don't have any issues with our neighbors. I'm not opposed to having something there. I just ask that we not have commercialized buildings within our neighborhood. There's no buffer of, there's no wall. I mean, typically, when you have a neighborhood that's built and adjacent to commercially or professional office spaces, there, there's a separation and not just a two-foot lull that flows water when it rains. Those are my primary...
Which property's yours?
Mine is the immediate one to the south.
Okay.
260 Rain Tree.
And has staff shown you the site plan?
I have seen it from another neighbor.
Does the site plan, the conceptual plan, include buffers?
No.
The only problem I have is, I just can't quite conceive of somebody wanting to build a home on State Road 54.
I understand that. I do understand that, and I'm not...
It seems to me that if you don't allow some alternate use, then you're gonna, what you're really doing is taking somebody's property and not paying them for it.
I would say this property is also to the east of Meadowbrook, not west, and that's semantical, but if you look to the actual east 300 feet, there are residential homes that are on State Road 54 that are a part of the same community.
I assume they've been there for quite some time.
They have been. I would do that, and I'm not...
State Road 54 is probably two lanes back.
My opposition is more based on, I'm not, I'm not, listen, I understand, and I get that they, there may be some benefits in rezoning the property. There may be some other, you know, financial benefits and wins to that.
Let me ask you this.
My opposition is not into that.
If this property were rezoned for office, how is that gonna affect, how do you think that's gonna affect you?
I think it depends on what kind of office is there.
Well, she said it's a doctor's office, a medical office.
It would be rezoned and proposed as to be a medical office, but could be sold as well. It could be a methadone clinic, it could be anything. I'm just saying, my issue is then in the separation between the residential community and the office space is my primary concern.
Is there anything, I'm gonna ask staff when you're done, but, I mean, is there any kind of protection, buffering, screening that would assuage your concerns?
I mean, if I couldn't have a neighbor, which would be my ultimate, I'd rather have a neighbor than an office, but if I were to have to pick, I would ask that something be contingent upon, you know, some kind of a wall or barrier, as they do down roads and highways, if you're gonna make that a commercial, a commercial area. And I don't think that's...
There are certain buffering requirements with commercial constructions. That's why he's asking that.
Landscape buffering is a 36-inch bush on an 18-inch mound, which is hardly a buffer between a residential and commercial area.
All right. Can I agree with you on that?
That's what I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, I have a question, follow-up question for staff. What would be the buffer required by code?
Thank you.
Hey, Brad Tippin, Development Review Department. It'd be a type B buffer, so that's a six-foot screen included in that.
So, that's either a fence, a wall, or a berm?
Berm, hedge.
But six feet high?
Collectively, at least six feet high, correct.
And I'll remind the Planning Commission that unless the applicant agrees to deed restrict this to something more stringent, you can't require them to do something more stringent.
Correct, it's a Euclidean.
It's Euclidean.
I apologize that you guys don't have the concept plan up. There is a retention pond behind the building, buffering us from the neighbors to the south, and of course, we would comply with the restrictions of the type B buffering. If that could be zoomed out, you will see that there is just, to the east of that, probably not even 700 yards away, there is offices on that same side of the road on State Road 54. That's the reason why we brought the idea of the medical office to the zoning commission is to make sure that we were following some other precedences that had been set in that area. And like I said, there is a retention pond to help buffer any noise of any sort, and also, we would be complying with the landscape type buffer as well.
Understood.
Type B buffering.
Okay, any other responses you would like to give us?
That is it.
Any other questions?
They are interested in making it a medical office.
Yeah.
Okay. Just interesting how the property to the east and west of it is owned by the DOT. It's right-of-way property.
Correct. East and west?
Yeah, on both sides.
Both sides of the road, or both sides of the property is owned by FDOT.
Well, for my purposes, my personal feelings is, I wouldn't vote to approve this unless there was a solid wall between this property and the residential property, and I think that's a reasonable request.
So, that would have to be done?
I think it's not reasonable to say that you have to put a house on 54, but it is reasonable to ask for substantial buffer, and if a wall is part of that requirement, I think we ought to require a solid wall.
A solid wall instead of the six-foot fences on the code.
Right, but I think the county attorney needs to clear, can you clarify how that has to happen, David?
Yeah, if you are willing to agree to something more stringent than the code, we'd have to do a deed restriction. The property would have to, we can't impose a condition on a Euclidean rezoning, so if you're amenable to that, you'd have to agree to deed restrict the property to add that additional requirement. Is that something your client's willing to do?
I would believe so. My only concern is with there being a ditch behind there. That wall could very easily restrict, if there was flooding from that ditch, being able to...
Branch, yeah.
Branch wherever it needs to, and obviously, we would keep our stormwater on-site, but with the drainage of that ditch, I don't, we don't know where it would be considering to go if there was considerable flooding.
Well, everybody's required to keep their own water on-site, so that wouldn't matter. And all I'm saying is, we can do what we want to as a group, but I won't support it without a wall.
If that is what...
I mean, I would tell you that they can turn concrete blocks sideways under a wall every, at certain spacings to allow water to pass through. That's not uncommon, or put notches in the bottom of the wall or whatever, if that's actually a problem.
Can I, can I ask Liam a question?
Yes.
Liam, there was a, there was a rezoning that came to the board very recently, I think a couple of years ago, where it started as commercial, same neighborhood. The board denied commercial and basically said they would only approve office. I think it's the one referenced in 9C of your, of our agenda. So, there's a precedent for approving office in this area. My question is, was any additional buffering required for that one? I don't, I'm asking, I don't remember.
I can't recall off the top of my head, but if you give me a second, I could pull it up and confirm that.
Okay. Because that's the one, I don't know if the Planning Commission remembers, but when it was proposed for commercial, we had a packed room. The board denied the commercial request, and then when they switched the request to office, we had little to no opposition for the one to the west. I understand that the gentleman's concerned, I'm just letting you know that there is a precedent. The board has decided that office is the appropriate use for this area, not commercial.
I agree.
To answer that question, there's no deed restriction attached to that rezoning from 7516.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, give me a second.
Maybe it just wasn't finding Act Number Two. Give me a second.
will ask the client to amenable that, but we would prefer a six-foot privacy fence. They're a little bit easier to maintain and repair.
No, we have the answer. So, there isn't, there wasn't a specific deed restriction regarding landscaping and buffering. There was a deed restriction that basically limited the building height to a two-stories maximum on that one.
All right. I think we bear our concerns. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'd make a motion, and I'm in agreement with you, Mr. Gray, that I think the least they could do is agree to construct a wall, and it sounds like they're not sure if they want to agree to that today or not, so what I'd do is move to continue them till we're back here in Newport-Ritchie again, so that they can have time to decide.
We would agree to the six-foot wall. We just would prefer to do the privacy fence instead.
Okay. Is that, do you like to amend your motion, or?
Okay. If the applicant...
Well, I mean, I'm just gonna ask the applicant point-blank. I need you to, because this is a voluntary deed restriction. All right, so are you willing to deed restrict the property to require a wall?
Yes.
And is that wall just on the south side? Is it the south side and the...
I would hope that it would just be on the south side. Like you said, DOT owns the other two.
That's my only concern.
And at some point in time, they might become available for sale, and if our client purchased it, then they'd have to come back before you to ask, to have one of those two walls torn down in order to...
Okay, so I'm gonna withdraw my motion, and then I'm gonna ask you one more question.
Yes, sir.
So, the DOT owns the property to the east?
And west.
East and west.
And have they ever made an offer to purchase your property?
Have they, no.
That's, that's what I'm struggling with, is it's just a weird donut hole of property that...
Yeah, but I think...
And as you can see, DOT doesn't use... DOT doesn't use both of those properties. There's one of them that is pretty original vegetation on it compared to the other.
Yeah, it's just weird how, from a planning perspective, it's...
Well, I, whatever.
Yeah.
And I think neither here nor there.
I would make another motion to approve, subject to the applicant agreeing to the deed restriction to construct a six-foot masonry wall to buffer the neighbor.
On the south side, only?
On the south side, yes.
Do you have a second?
No, second.
Further discussion? Not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Okay, done. Okay, done.
Excuse me, Chairman, can I get a little clarification on that from my team when it comes to review? Is that the six-foot screen within the type B buffer as a six-foot wall? Or only a six-foot wall?
It's the type B, you're going to require a type B buffer.
The other buffer requirements too, but the screen has to be a six-foot wall. Okay, thank you.
Well, of course, that's for the board to decide, but yes.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Tammy Snyder, planning and economic growth department.
What's going on now?
San Hill Ridge MPUD, PEG 247777. It's a zoning amendment from R1MH Single Family Mobile Home District to an MPUD to allow 23, 23 single-family detached dwelling units on approximately 4.39 acres. It's on the west side, it's in, in the West Market area, on the west side of Little Road, about 825 feet north of the West Pasco Government Center, Citizens Drive, and 2,900 feet south of Ridge Road. Here's a location map. That is the brand-new VA center directly across the street. We've got another shopping center coming into the north of that. Here's a context map. The current zoning districts, it's R1MH, pretty much all the way around it except for the commercial to the east. Here's a master plan, pretty simple. And with that, we recommend approval with conditions to the BCC. I will note that there is a variation request to not interconnect to the west because of the residential and little mobile home park that we've got going on there. And they also want a variation from 522.2, so that they can have a residential-only MPUD less than five acres due to the affordable Habitat for Humanity quality of this project. And they also want relief from the strict enforcement of PM 26, because it requires 40-foot-wide lots to be rear-loaded, unless designed in a TND or in a 55-plus community. And due to the affordability aspect of this and the small size of the MPUD, it's requesting relief from that so that they can be front-loaded, but it will be required to follow all the other conditions in PM 26.
Let me see the site plan again. That's the site plan?
The master plan, yeah.
Lot of detail there.
Mm-hmm. Just 23 little lots.
Gotcha.
Going to have some retention, and they're not required to park because it doesn't have over 25 lots.
Can I ask David a question?
Sure.
And it has to do with the PM 26 thing. How do you deal with like, and I'm going to use the wrong term because the code sets up alternative standards for land development code requirements and variances for zoning requirements, but this is a policy memorandum, how does that work?
I don't think that technically it requires a variation or alternative standard, but I think Tammy's just including in the agenda memo to disclose that they're deviating from the policy memo. It's not, I don't think they're legally required to, but she's doing it as a courtesy to the planning commission and board that.
So.
So they know that it's a deviation from PM 26.
So then the question that I have is, can any other developer come in and ask for a deviation from PM 26?
In theory, yes, even PM, the PM 26 memo even says that people can request. Now, I will tell you that if, as a general rule, I don't think the board looks too favorably on deviations from PM 26, but they might make an exception for this project because it is an affordable housing project and.
And we're not saying we shouldn't, I, I just, it's just a curiosity question about how policy memoranda are enforced or not enforced, or what their legal effectiveness actually is.
So it's basically a board direction for staff to implement certain requirements and MPUDs, but the board doesn't have to always follow that policy if they don't want to.
Okay.
And staff, and I think staff is correctly noting that it's a deviation from the policy so that it's not, nobody thinks they're trying to slip it through.
I, I'm not, and not saying that they are, I just didn't understand how it worked.
Okay, thank you. The applicant present? You're busy today, aren't you?
Yeah, thank you, Shelley Johnson, 6400 Madison Street, and I have been sworn. This is a Habitat community for 23 single-family residential units. Just in case there's any questions, they service the population that's the 80% AMI, and these are owned and fee simple, they are not rentals. So if there's any other questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
Are these, are these mobiles?
No, they're single-family residential.
Okay.
Site built.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else have a question? If not?
We, we do have two folks signed up to speak on this one.
Okay.
Ms. Valerie Ferreri, I think it says, I apologize, and Alan Daniel.
Valerie Ferreri, 7747 Calabash Lane. Calabash is Emmons and Blueberry, it's a horseshoe, and Calabash is right down there. It's all a dirt road. The dirt roads flood out all the time. We've always been told that we're only allowed one place per half acre out there. That part of the land is out there. We were not expecting nowhere near 23 places. Sorry, I'm nervous. A little upset too. Um, 23 places, eight or nine would be bad enough. The traffic, there's only one way in and one way out. If you're going south, you have to go down Emmons. All right, and if you're going north, you have to go, we have to even go around to Blueberry to be able to cut across Little Road, get into the little turn lane where the VA is, and then do a U-turn around the VA. The traffic cannot handle 23 houses in there. It can't. The traffic would be so backed up, there would be so many accidents, there are no lights. We always thought they would put a light there. Plus the fact that we're all septic out there in wells. What, what's that going to do to the neighboring wells? You, they could be heading into our wells and everything. I would like this considered. I'm, I'm nervous, but thank you.
It's okay.
It's okay.
Thank you very much. Can we zoom in on this a little bit? I look on about three miles, 3,000 feet up.
Different heights.
Yeah, I'm getting nervous. Fall.
You guys go ahead, I was just going to see if I could get their phone.
Sorry, you're doing it a little differently, so I can't.
Okay.
And our taxes and the roads, what are they going to do?
You can't speak from the, I'm sorry, you can't speak from there, that's all right.
Valerie Ferreri, what are they going to do about our dirt roads? They're holy enough as it is. You can't go down those roads over five miles an hour on either road.
We'll try to get some answers for you.
Tammy Snyder, again. I do know that part of their substandard road improvements, they will have to improve both Emmons and Blueberry Drive up to their project entrances. So that part will be taken. I am really not sure how many people from this development will want to go west to the internal roads. They'll probably just want to head out to Little Road.
So they're going to require it to be paved, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
And is there any deed restrictions that go with this MPUD?
What do you mean?
Well, the applicant appears to be Habitat for Humanity, are these, are we being assured that when this is developed, that this is going to be a Habitat for Humanity development, not just sold off?
They will be affordable, yes.
Well, yeah, to be clear.
80% AMI below.
Let me answer the question correctly. Tammy's right, there's requirements that it be affordable below 80% of AMI. It doesn't necessarily have to be Habitat that develops, but if they sold it, it'd have to be another affordable housing provider.
And that's locked in for 30 years, I believe, is what the conditions say.
I'm not aware of any MPUD were restricted to a particular owner. But we do restrict things based on affordability, which that's, condition 40 requires that.
So if somebody buys one of these units and then they resell it, they're still held to that same 80% AMI requirement?
Yes, for, there's a 30-year affordability requirement.
Yeah, and there's restrictions placed on the homeowners too, in order to qualify to even buy one of those Habitat houses.
No, but I, to Jamie's question, I'm curious about that too. So somebody that makes 70 or 75% of AMI buys this house, what happens if they sell that house? Must they sell that to somebody who else makes less than 80%?
Yes, for the 30-year affordability period.
How's that assured? Five owners down the line, how's that assured?
We make them record a land use restriction agreement.
I see, okay.
That ensures it will remain affordable. If the applicant wants to correct anything, I'm saying they can, they're welcome to.
No, that's correct. It'll be, it's in our conditions of approval, and we will have to do a LUM, so it continues down through the title. But it, you know, that is the intention, it continue to be affordable, obviously pursuant to the county regs.
So maybe, I don't know, maybe you can answer this question or not. I mean, past experience with Habitat for Humanity is they get the homes at little to no cost, they have to work to help build the things, but this is not the typical, this doesn't sound like the typical Habitat for Humanity project here.
Oh, so.
Good afternoon, Shawn King.
Well, they're talking about income restricting these homes. I, I, it sounds like they don't necessarily have to do what we know as a Habitat for Humanity project, they could just sell these lots to people and build houses, and as long as they make less than 80% AMI, sell them as an affordable housing project, not what we typically know as Habitat. And I'm not saying that's a reason to deny it or approve it or one way, I'm just curious.
Yeah, so, good afternoon, Commissioner, Shawn King, 7237 Little Road. I'm the chief strategy officer for Habitat for Humanity and leading this development. Just for the record, we do these developments throughout our service area and our, our community. It is different from the traditional single-family residential infill that you may see in, in neighborhoods. However, it is not different from anything else we do programmatically. We're about to celebrate our 900th home tomorrow. We have a big celebration, so I'd welcome everybody, it's going to be in Pinellas and Largo. But anyways, throughout those 900 homes, one of the principles of Habitat for Humanity is a hand up, not a handout. So the only difference between our homes and homeowners is that they are afforded and provided a 0% interest mortgage. They buy, they purchase the home from, from Habitat. To do, to do so, they have to qualify, one of the qualifications is income. The second one is willingness to partner, and that's where really the sweat equity comes in. So they go through 350, they have to do 350 to 450 sweat equity hours, that's building their home, and in this development, their home, their neighbors and whatnot. They also have to do 36 homebuyer education classes. Obviously, heavy on budget and financing, being a good neighbor, community policing, everything, maintenance. So we really are trying to set them up for long-term success. If the home is resold, there will be a land use restriction that runs through, as Ms. Johnson said, runs with the land, so a LORA agreement. We also have the first right of refusal to repurchase the home. So if they do want to sell, they need to move, they need to downsize, whatever, they have to come to us first. And generally speaking, we'll repurchase the home and then place another Habitat homeowner in, in that unit. So that's kind of high level, just for the record, of kind of how our, our program works. And, and we're eager to develop this property.
I, I can't remember, is there any restrictions to how soon they can sell the home, or having to repay subsidies or anything like that when they sell?
Yeah, so there's not any restrictions for how soon they can sell the home. What there are is there are restrictions in place about the equity. So we protect the equity, because the last thing we want, and I think anybody wants, is somebody getting in the home and then quote-unquote flipping it, right? So for these homeowners, it's in all of our mortgage docs, there's what we call the shared equity provision, and they don't really receive any of the upside of the equity for at least 10 years while they're in the home, and then it's incremental. After 30 years, that's the goal of our program, is, is kind of intergenerational wealth and wealth creation through homeownership. So once they pay off that mortgage, free and clear, and, and they're out of the land use restrictions, we're hopeful that they've been a longtime community member, they have a little nest egg, and, and they can, you know, put that towards retirement, kids' college funds, whatever it may be. But that's really the, the point of, of what we do.
Can I add to that, which is, normally, these projects also try to qualify for impact fee and mobility fee reductions, and we impose requirements on them that if they sell the home for a non-affordable price, they'd have to pay back all of those incentives we're giving them. So there's a financial reason that they don't, typically don't violate those restrictions as well.
Right, so that kind of makes it, makes that moot. For what it's worth, I mean, I've, I've worked with Habitat in the past, we've raised money for Habitat, it's a fantastic organization, and it, you do what you say you do, you give people a hand up and, and really give people a chance at homeownership that never would have had the chance to otherwise, so.
That's exactly what we're trying to do.
Thank you for doing the good work you guys do.
But to Mr. Moody's point, I applaud Habitat as well, but they're not the only nonprofit that does this, so hypothetically, if they sold to another nonprofit that does the same type of program, that would not be inconsistent with the, the conditions of the zoning.
Interesting. It's a different animal, I haven't seen yet.
Is there anybody else?
Mr. Chair, so for the record, we do have Mr. Alan Daniel that also signed up to speak. I, I turned around and asked, and it seems that he is not going to speak. Can you please verify that that's the case?
Mr. Daniel, are you in the present, are you present?
He doesn't.
Okay, you're not speaking?
He doesn't hear you.
Okay.
I can't hear anything. I really don't know what's going on, I'm afraid.
Okay, well, are you Mrs. Daniel? Are you his wife, or? Can you verify for us that he's not going to speak?
Yes, Valerie Ferreri, he can't hear you. I've worked for Mr. Daniel. Mr. Daniel has at least eight properties out there. There's another property owner, Steve Grady, he's, he owns the upper part of Emmons. He's had a stroke, he can't speak. All right, but what we're, we're worried, I've worked for Habitat too, by the way, I used to work for them.
Ma'am, this was not an opportunity for you to get up and make more comments.
I know. But, but the half an acre thing, we're, we're only allowed one place per half acre out there.
Ma'am, as I said, you've had a chance to speak. The question the chair asked you was, if you know this gentleman, does he want to, does he want?
Can't hear the conversation, and he doesn't know what to say.
Can you ask him whether he wants to speak?
I did, he doesn't know what's going on because he cannot hear the conversation.
So he doesn't want to speak. Okay, thank you.
I did see a gentleman in the back, though, that raised his hand.
I'm sorry, I, I know both of you folks, I live on Calabash.
You can't.
Sir, if you want to speak, you're going to come up.
I didn't sign up.
Okay, well then, we'll have you arrested.
It's okay, you didn't sign up, but were you sworn? Did you swear in?
I did not.
Okay, let's get you sworn in.
Do you swear in the testimony you're about to give us, the truth, healthy guy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Richard Gardner, 7732 Calabash Lane, I live actually across from Alan. I think what they're doing is fantastic. The concern is the roads. They are dirt roads, they do flood out. Adding 23 homes on 4.3 acres does seem like a little excessive. I don't know how big the homes are exactly. It's getting in and out. We put the Vet Center across, you have AmVets right there on the corner. What that causes is people coming in to drop off goods for AmVet. They don't even see us coming onto Emmons, and there's almost accidents there daily. They pull right out. We thought a light was going to go in there, may have been not. That would be our biggest concern, is the amount of traffic coming in and out.
Okay. You know, and you heard that they're going to pave those roads, right?
Yes, sir. But again, visibility, I know personally, when you turn right out of Emmons, you can't go right, you have to go right and then come down to Citizens and take and do the Uwe. Right, actually, right there on that corner. Right, actually, right there on that corner, they fly with those electric bikes. There, you cannot visibly see coming out of there.
Okay.
It is a concern for the roads.
Can you guys put the one-foot topo contours on that Pasco mapper map? Should be natural features, I think, or storm.
Natural features.
Yeah, zoom in a little.
Emmons and Blueberry are Pasco County roads. Calabash is a private. The county does come in and smooth them out with the lime rock. It rains, it gets baffles. I, I welcome the.
It's lower than the surrounding neighborhood.
It's just the people getting out onto Little Road.
Okay.
It's higher than Little Road, many, in many places.
No, but I, the neighbors have talked about the road flooding, and I'm gonna be asking if they've got to do substandard road improvements, are they correcting the flooding on the road? I'm good with the map.
We can ask Essen to confirm, but my understanding is that nine oh one point four does require them to fix existing flooding when they make substandard road improvements.
You want to ask Essen for that?
If he's, if he can confirm that, that'd be great.
Well, can staff.
David, I.
Essen, is that you? Hello?
So I do also want to say that the, their engineer of record is also on, and I have elevated him, just in case if he would like to speak as well.
Maybe he can answer the question.
Well, let me just ask it a different way. Is the substandard road mitigation actual construction or prop share payment?
In this case, it's actual construction.
Okay.
So it should help to mitigate some of that flooding that you're talking about.
Okay, yeah, there's a retention pond across from AmVets. Just off of Emmons, right there, actually.
But he may want to ask the engineer if, if he's being elevated, whether he's gonna accommodate the drainage from the substandard road improvements within his site. He probably knows that.
Okay, you just asked him. Can he answer?
I'm here, John, and, can you guys hear me?
Is that Greg?
Paul Manuel Coastal Design.
Oh, Paul.
Yeah. Go ahead.
You guys can hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
I haven't been sworn, if you, if you need to do that.
Do you swear in front of the testimony you're about to give as the truth's healthy guide?
I do.
Thank you.
So we, we are at the beginning stages of design. We do have. I'm sorry.
Your name and address, sir.
Oh, Paul Manuel Coastal Design Consultants, sevens through two-sixth Little Road.
All right, go ahead, Paul.
We, we've got, you know, a conceptual plan that doesn't include drainage. One of our drainage ponds is right adjacent to Emmons, and we have another drainage pond that, next to Blueberry. So there would be some runoff that would come from those roads that are a little located over our site anyway. They would naturally drain into that area, so I don't think we have a problem, you know, accommodating that in, in the improvements we're making to the road. I, I do know that those improvements do include, you know, we will look at the structural numbers for the road that exists there today, move those to county standard all the way back past our entrance road. Those will be repaved and widened if need to be, to meet county standard.
Okay, part of Blueberry Lake, which is a swamp, it's in the Magnolia Valley water. I know I pay extra in my taxes.
Water shed, yeah.
Yeah, there's a pump or something down off of Ridge Rowan slash, and it still floods in my back. So again, if we elevate and we move, I just want to be sure that it's not gonna flood more, or.
Well, all right, I, I'll try to help you, and the engineer can answer for himself, too. Our county regulations and the water management district are not going to allow them to displace floodwaters, okay? So if they go in and they fill all the low areas in this site, and I expect that they will, they're going to have to excavate other areas so that the water displaced by that fill has someplace to go without going on your property or on the road. And they're going to look to make sure that flood elevations aren't increased in the area. But I'm looking, I think he provided a satisfactory answer as to that they would address the flooding of the roads with the substandard road mitigation, so.
Okay. Will there be wells?
John, this is Essen. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Does it be served by county water?
Yeah, county water and sewer.
I was having some mic issues.
It'll, it won't be wells and septic. It'll be county water and sewer.
They can't on forty-foot-wide lots. They have to have water and sewer.
Okay.
Essen, were you trying to say something?
I, I can confirm that. Paul Manuel, again, I do confirm that we are, we are planning for water and sewer served through the county.
Yep. Okay.
That should take care of the concerns about the wells, okay?
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Not a lot. That, that's gonna have to be traffic and all that. Number of accidents have to occur.
Thank you very much for coming up. Appreciate that. Okay.
I think Essen was trying to say something. I don't know if he wants to finish.
Yeah, David, can, sorry, I was having mic issues. I hope you can hear me now.
Gotcha.
Yes.
Yeah, so even though I did not review the specific substandard road analysis, but our standard condition states that it, that road shall be improved to county standards, which includes addressing all of those issues that you were just talking about. Flooding, structural number of the road, the width, all of that.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's good.
Yeah.
Thank you, Essen.
Okay.
Yeah, sure, you're welcome. I'm sorry about the issue of having.
I think we've got all the information we need to make a decision if somebody will make a motion. General, please.
Geez, somebody gonna step up, or I gotta make all the motions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second Eugene.
Any further discussion of the motion? Not, all favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Pose like sign. Hey.
It's up to you.
I don't.
You need a break?
Think I'm good.
Remember she's going to.
Just drink slow, Chuck.
I'm sorry, go ahead, David.
So I'm just standing up for PC nine.
PC nine.
We're gonna do ten first, though, right?
David Engel, Planning and Economic Growth Director. We would like to ask for a thirty-day continuance for PC nine to the July twenty-fifth Planning Commission meeting in Newport Ritchie. The reason is, we've had some last-minute stakeholder engagement on some language refinement, and we'd like to bring it back with consensus. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, David.
I'll move to continue the item for thirty days to Newport Ritchie.
Second.
I'll second. And David, just, just as my input, I, I have several comments on this issue, too. If possible, I would like to be involved in this discussion with the staff.
Well, certainly, sir. We, we did reach out to the Planning Commission members, and if you want to continue to engage, we'd explore that with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. All right. So we have a motion, and we still have a second?
Yeah, motion, second.
Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Pose like sign? Very good.
And now Doreen Roy will be presenting item PC ten.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. Doreen Roy, Planning and Economic Growth, item PC ten. Proposed amendments were reviewed by the Horizontal Roundtable Interested Parties on April eleventh and were presented to the Horizontal Roundtable Interested Parties meeting on June nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four. This is the table for the reasons in the chapter. I'm going to, for time, I think I'm just going to skip through the table. You have that in your packet. But I will cover a couple of the items in the red line. Chapter four hundred, Permit Types and Applications, Section four oh two, four oh two point two C, four D. These codes particularly pertain to submittal requirements for cultural and historic resources. Item D, a Phase One Cultural Resource Assessment, including the following project scope, archival research and identification of sites adjacent to the subject property, identification of research design and description of field methodology, field work, and analysis of the findings and conclusions. We are adding, the survey shall be no older than ten years and shall be consistent with current CRAS Phase One criteria or be recertified by a consultant. All recommendations made by the consultant shall be implemented by the applicant. This is mainly to make sure and ensure that county and state criteria are met.
So, quick, quick question, Doreen.
Yes.
Is the CRAS fa, if I'm understanding this right, the CRAS Phase One criteria is the sentence above the underlined sentence? Or is there more specific criteria? I don't have too much knowledge of these things.
They're, they're very minor. You're looking at, the red line is what has been added?
I may not understand my question. I'm asking, what are the CRAS criteria? It says it either has to be less, no older than ten years old, and be consistent with the criteria, or be recertified by a consultant. I'm trying to understand the, the difference between meeting the criteria and being recertified by a consultant.
Some of the, some of the CRAS reports are very old. We have several DRIs that are very old in the county with MPUDs. Some of these CRAS reports are very old. They are eighteen, some of them twenty-two. Even Euclidian zoning, we've had projects come in where the CRAS report was quite old. So we just want to ensure that the criteria also meets the state criteria. Because now, we, for instance, we had a project come in for workforce housing recently this year. The CRAS report they were submitting was twenty-two years old. So therefore, the, when you're trying to meet the state criteria, the state is going to, because the property was workforce housing, they receive state funding. They are going to require the state to comment, so the shipboard office will comment.
Mr. Moody, if it's, if it's okay, can I add to what my colleague is answering? So there is a section in the Land Development Code, which is Section eight oh nine Cultural Resources. So basically, that section provides direction as to what cultural resources are required. So basically, it's Cultural Resource Management Standards and Facilities Management, published by the Division of Historic Resources and conformed to Rule one A dash forty-six or Rule nine J two-point-zero-four-three Florida Administrative Code. So the standards are within those rules.
Is there, go ahead. Terry clearly wants to say something.
Oh, okay. All right.
You can't read a sign language, you know?
No, I didn't take that in school. So, do you want me to continue, or?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So just minor edits, and as you can see, the red line, we are replacing the word identify in several of the code. There are particularly seven that state this to identify any registered or recorded cultural resources on the site. So that's part of the submittal requirements. We want to change that because archaeological sites do not follow the Sunshine laws because, because of looting. So we don't want to identify. Identify kind of indicates, locate it, you know, show the location. So we just want them to list. So we have several other codes here in four oh three. It's basically the same thing. Mass grading, mining operating permits, construction and demolition debris, disposal facilities, operating permit, and yard trash processing facilities. Then in chapter eight hundred, under Natural and Cultural Resources Protection, the eight oh nine point two, generally, we are removing that reference to a website that is no, no longer active. Eight oh nine four, Standards for Surveys and Analysis. Again, the same language. We are adding the time limitation for the CRAS. Eight oh nine point eight, Historic Cemeteries, Specific Requirements. We are changing the language to read, we are ambiguous, the cemetery boundary shall be identified by qualified archaeologists. The new boundary shall be marked, and any buffer recommendation shall be shown on the submittals. We've recently had three projects come in that include a historic cemetery or are adjacent to a historic cemetery. So we are relying on the experts' recommendations for those recommendations and requirements of buffering. Find the proposed ordinance amendment consistent with the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan and recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners. The hearings will be for the first reading in August, August sixth, and August twenty-first for the adoption. If there are any questions? That I can answer?
Trying to understand the, kind of the context and the need for the, the change in the code. So you've had some projects come in that were either included or near cemeteries, and then you mentioned a workforce housing project that the CRAS was twenty years old, was staff of the belief that there were some new or undiscovered cultural resources there that?
No. The, we are making sure and ensuring that the state criteria is met along with county. So the state criteria, they not only look for the CRAS report being, they look at the methodology that is used. So the state uses a different methodology and with their Module Three standards. So if it isn't to that standard, especially when it comes to a project that receives state funding, they look at it very closely. They review whether it has, especially something that is over ten years old. They look at the CRAS report very carefully.
What was your question again, Mr. Moody?
I'm just trying to understand the context. There's, it just isn't something I thought was like high on the priority list of things to address. I'm curious what's, what's precipitated the need to change the code. That, that's all.
Is that, Nick Targos Pito's, Planning and Economic Growth, essentially the change for the CRAS reports is to pursue the most recent methodology. is to pursue the most recent methodology used by the state. We can, we can make an adjustment to the text to clarify that we use the most recent methodology by the state. That way, we don't have to deal with a 10-year increment issue. But that's effectively what the, this text amendment is pursuing.
Just to get it consistent.
Let me, just a question. If you have a site and you have, educate me. If you have a site and you have a letter, a clearance letter from a SHPO letter, that SHPO letter expires? That clearance letter from the state office expires?
Yeah, they don't longer give those letters out anymore. They stopped doing that?
The reason I'm asking a question is that, and I know this affects a lot of, a lot of properties in the county where you have, and I know I asked this question and I did get a response, and it was a response that came back, something to the effect of if their structures, and now all of a sudden they're over 50 years old or something. But there's a lot of big projects in the county that are historic, they're pasture land. There are no structures, there's nothing there. These projects have been entitled. These projects have had these cultural resource surveys done on the entire property. The property's been split up. Now, it's being sold off, be it 15, 20 years later. Nothing is different on this property. Yet, they're required to spend not only the dollars but waste the time that it takes to go back out and redo these studies to look for historic artifacts that, to my knowledge, didn't show up in the last 15 or 20 years. So, that's why, I'm just trying to understand why we're going back and revisiting this and adding this provision back in the code.
I think he asked the question better than I did.
That's correct, yes, yeah. It's basically, we can't, we don't know when the state changes their methodology. That's, that's the whole thing. We want to make sure that we are keeping in line with the state criteria. Because we don't know when they change their criteria. They don't put a time stipulation, if you will, on the CRAS reports. They just look at how the methodology was done in the CRAS report. And if that original CRAS report was done back in 2003, I guarantee you, it doesn't, it doesn't hold water today.
Okay, so just, let me ask, what's the effect locally? So, if they're going to do development, they end up having to go get a permit from the Water Management District. And if the Water Management District thinks there's cultural resources, they're going to refer it to the state. So, are we, is this a duplication of effort that maybe isn't necessary?
Not necessarily.
Well, what would be a circumstance where it is?
Because they also, they also look for historic structures. So, getting back to what Mr. Girardi was saying is that, I mean, they're looking for also, they don't just, of course, there's no, not going to be any more artifacts or like Mr. Girardi mentioned, the indigenous peoples. Of course, you know, they've already found it if it's already located. And there's usually the master site file in the state office. We already know it was, it existed. However, in the local area, they're also looking at the structures that are now coming into their historic 50-year or older. So, they include that into that area.
I understand. But what I'm getting at is ultimately, another state agency is going to deal with this. What's the necessity that we need to do it at the county level? And I'm not saying there isn't a necessity, but can you point out to me, what is the county's necessity to do this?
It has to align with the state. That's, that would be my answer.
Right, what I'm getting at is, can we save the taxpayers a couple of dollars? If the state taxes, state agencies are taking care of these issues with state tax dollars, why do we need to do it here at the county level with county dollars?
Yeah, it is, yeah. Then you have to know the LVC.
I think the intent for the county is, firstly, it's a compliance matter. And it's an ability to track and stand up a historic preservation activity within the county. So, I think the way that the proposed language is written, we could probably adjust it so that there isn't additional work that needs to happen. But that simply that the CRAS be confirmed that it's up to date with current state methodology. And then we can ensure compliance is met.
That seems a lot more.
But it's not intended to recreate a whole process for the, for the applicants, or for any applicant to come in and have them redo.
He's trying to make sure old reports are in compliance with the new methodology.
Yeah.
Essentially. So, that's, that, why couldn't we write the language to say that?
I think that's what the.
I think that's what it says. And that's what I was trying to understand.
The time limit was reaching for that, but I think there's a better way to state it, which is that we should use the most recent methodology.
I just, I still don't, I don't feel like I got a clear answer as to what is the county's interest in this. I mean, like I said, ultimately, when you go to the state agency for your stormwater permitting, if they believe that there is any cultural, and I had this happen recently on a project where I applied to SWIFTMUD. And one of the comments I got back is that some site file was identified and that I needed to submit to. They actually notified the State Department of Historical Resources or whatever they're called, that that's what they found. And then I was required to, or my client was required to retain an archaeologist and go out and do all kinds of samples and provide that in our response back to the district. And what I'm trying to find out is what is the county, the state's doing this. Why do we need to do it again here at the local level? That's all I'm asking. What, what danger is there to the county by allowing the state to handle this issue rather than us locally?
Right, I think that the CRAS report is a state mandate. So, it's ultimately going back to the state. But I also think that the cultural resources are local. And so, the local jurisdiction ought to be aware and understand what it has present within the community. Right now, we don't have, other than simply checking for compliance and ensuring that the state methodology is in order, that they've done everything accordingly. There isn't a direct program, but there can be a program in the future if all of our CRAS has been documented locally and we understand, and we understand that all to have a complete program. We don't have such a program just yet.
So then why burden, if we don't have a program, why burden an applicant with that?
Because we have to build a database for it.
I mean, Terry, I guess the point here is, is I know, I think John knows, and you and your staff all know, everybody's plenty busy. And we seem like we're creating work.
All I can, all I can say to that is it's unnecessary.
Just a minute. It's not, we're just not creating work for staff. We're also creating cost for citizens that doesn't need to, that need to happen. The work's being done at the state level anyway.
You know, there's been, we've had two cases today with dealing with affordability of housing. And I listened to the board's workshop on housing affordability. And you know what I was shocked not to hear when I listened to all of those discussions? No one's ever asked, why is housing not affordable? No one's ever asked that question or attempted to ask that, answer that question. And here's an opportunity to reduce the cost of providing, you know, the cost that goes into a development. There's already a state process to deal with this. Why duplicate that and add to the cost? We want to solve our affordable housing problem. Let's, let's start looking at the costs of the housing. You know, and every time we pass another regulation, there's another cost. And that's why in October, starting in October, then if you want to pass a regulation, you're going to have to provide an analysis of this cost. The state recognizes this too. Maybe this is a good place for us to start.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may also add, one of the, the CRAS is a valuable resource when we're looking at the development of a site to understand the cultural activity that's present on the site and how we might address development as it is proposed, right? There's been a number of projects in recent memory at least where the CRAS report played a central role in understanding how development should proceed on a particular site.
Okay, so that's, that goes to the nature of my original question. Give me, no one's been able to tell me, how does that affect us locally? You're saying that that may be the case. What is that?
Right, so the CRAS report, based on the data that's in there, is going to indicate to us perhaps certain conditions of approval that we may want to impose on a project. But that's also part of the database building that I mentioned earlier.
Give me something I can kind of visualize. You said there were recent projects and that the CRAS played an important role. What was, what did you find? What was the role? What, what did this do?
I mean, it's. Do you have a case study?
Cemetery.
Yeah.
Cemetery projects.
Typically, projects that are near to or at old cemeteries. There was the project that was proposed for a while at Anclaw River Park. That report was used in the understanding of how things could fit on that site. That's the kind of activity that typically a CRAS report will help with identifying.
Terry, I think everybody understands the value of a CRAS report, but what's changed in the last 10 years that would make a study 10 years ago not as important as a study that was updated today?
Indian mounds at Anclaw Park have been known for decades or centuries. This isn't new information.
That's what I'm saying, that the 10 years that the proposed language is suggesting, we should remove that reference and simply say that if the CRAS meets all the criteria that the state requires, all that you would need to do is have the consultant or whoever validate and say, yes, this meets all the.
So, that means for every project, no matter what, I got to go to an archaeologist and get him to certify my report that was just completed six months ago?
Yeah, that's my question.
That, that is, that's going the other direction.
No, well, what I'm trying to get to is the point where someone says that this is a fully updated CRAS that meets the current state standard. If somebody validates that, then it's fine. If it's been validated once and then you bring it back, well, this was validated in 2022, it's good to go. That's what I want to get to.
But what I'm hearing is if I, if I buy a school site and I bank it, and I get a CRAS when I buy the school site, and now I build the school 12 years later, I've got to get a consultant to re, basically redo that CRAS or confirm that, I have to pay a consultant to confirm that that CRAS is okay.
Not necessarily.
Well, I don't understand how you're saying not necessarily because that's what the code says right here that we're being asked.
We're trying to meet the criteria. So, with the state criteria, not ours.
But how, but how is not necessarily the answer to that question? Because that's what this says unless you're proposing modified language.
Well, that's why we're gonna, we're open to the modified language.
But who's confirming that? Because it sounds like I have to pay a consultant to confirm that. Okay. But that's my question. Are you confirming that or is my consultant?
Here's my idea. Barbara Willhite, 6327 Grand Boulevard, Newport, Ritchie. I've enjoyed my afternoon here. I have nothing on the agenda. It's been lovely.
And yet, you're still here.
And yet, I'm still here. So, I wanted to just kind of say my piece on this, so maybe I can leave. So, we, we came, we came across this in one of my CRAs. Been a couple of years, I think. And so, I learned a few things during that. And I learned that the standards changed in 2010. And so, the methodology to make sure that you're catching all the cultural resources changed. So, I think the concern there is to make sure these are important things. The cultural resources are cultural resources are important. So, to make sure that the updated methodology was used to check, to make sure that we catch all these things. So, I don't have any problem with that. But I do have a problem with 10 years because it's just arbitrary and it's rolling. So, we always got to go back. If it changed in 2010, let's find the date it changed and say, because we need to make sure they can implement it. After that date in 2010, you're going to have to, if you're before that date, you have to come in and recertify, which is just, and they already changed it. And so, it didn't have to be the original professional. It can be any consultant because professionals retire and die and all those things. So, it's any consultant. And what you do is if you're before that date, you just have to recertify it. So, it seems like if you have a date certain that we can apply and we, so we, and we know that, okay, it's important that those get recertified or redone. I think you could catch it. Now, if staff doesn't want to keep track of when, if the standards change again, that's on them. So, that's why they put the date in there so that they, it can roll and they don't have to keep up with whether there's change at the state level. But I think the date, and then if they want to update their ordinance again, if the standards change again, they can change the date or whatever. So, that's my practical approach to kind of balance here between the two. Their desire and need to have it, to know about these important resources from a land use perspective, but also trying to make it not so onerous on us applicants. And I don't think we'll see a lot of situations where, you know, our CRAs are that old. But I think if you practically do those two things, any consultant can recertify and you put a date certain in your ordinance, I think you'll have a balance.
Well, I think that's what Terry was trying to get around with the whole date certain thing. It's just saying the most recent.
Yeah, but then we don't know what, it's not, you can't implement that.
If it hasn't changed since 2010, is that a true statement?
That's what professionals told me. I called some people my spare time.
It's not like they're changing it every year.
Yeah, no, it's.
I mean, it sounds like it's a pretty infrequent change. I like, much better having the idea of a date certain in there.
Agreed.
And it makes it implementable on all sides. That's my idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who's getting the invoice? Okay, can I hear some motion here?
So, where are the other? I was just gonna, so is that, I mean, I like Barbara's idea. Is that feasible with you all?
And that's what I was trying to describe, but yes.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just different words.
Yes.
One last question, just out of curiosity. These ones that involve cemeteries, I mean, was somebody proposing to develop over a cemetery or?
I think they made a movie about that.
There was one project. We recently had two residential subdivision projects come in on larger, part of larger MPUD projects. And one in particular included a cemetery with unmarked graves in the parcel itself. And it actually extends to an out parcel that wasn't part of the CRAS report, but it suspected that there may be burials on that property as well. So, there were specific recommendations that included a 164-foot buffer to ensure that, and included as part of the design of that property, that residential subdivision as part of the green space, open space.
That's what I was trying to get to.
Sure.
Okay, let's get to it.
Motion.
So, what would the proposed language be to set that date? We don't know that date though, of when the last update was made to the CRAS.
2010.
Well, that's, that's what Barbara thought, you know, based on what she had heard.
I'm sorry, say it again.
Yeah, I mean. Terry, I'm assuming you're looking for a date. Is that right?
I'll get to the date pretty soon. I want to move to continue.
We can find the exact date that's listed in the state statutes and put that into the ordinance to get the date certain that we've been talking about. We suspect that Barbara may be right, January 1, 2010. But we'll confirm it and then input the state statute date into the proposed ordinance language in time for the board meeting.
Okay. Okay.
So we'll read something to the effect of if it's, if the CRAS was completed prior to that date and our consultant will have to certify that all the standards were looked at. Okay.
Okay, was that a motion?
That's a motion.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Further discussion, all in favor? If you can find by saying aye.
Aye.
Six signs. Okay, motion carries. Can you do the next one, Terry? I have a sound. Okay.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, it's Artur Espitoz, Planning and Economic Growth. Item P11 is a Land Development Code Amendment to Section 1105 Self-Storage Facility Standards. This section, this Land Development Code Amendment was mandated by the Board of County Commissioners at the January 9, 2024 Board of County Commissioners meeting where they directed staff to initiate changes to Section 1105, 5 General Design Guidelines for self-storage facility standards to remove the complete prohibition of open RV boat storage in the transit corridor north of State Road 52 for that portion that's in the urban service area specifically. This amendment has gone through the typical review process, through the ordinance development team, and was presented at the horizontal table on April 17, 2024. This amendment was predicated on a December 7, 2021 BCC adoption of ordinance number 2176, which made freestanding recreational vehicle boat storage facilities a special exception use in C3, I1, and I2 zoning districts. And although freestanding recreational vehicle boat storage facilities are not in employment generating use to be put into C3, I1s, and I2s, each application for special exception use requires an individual review of its location, design, configuration, operation, and the public need for particular uses at the particular location that they're proposed. In addition, the special exception is individually conditioned and you can impose additional requirements to ensure that such a use can fit within these zoning districts. One of the major, one of the main special exception conditions is that we can impose sunset provisions in order to ensure potential use of the C3, I1, or I2 properties in the future. So it's a form of, it's like a land banking strategy of sorts that was incorporated into the Land Development Code in December 7. It gives C3, I1, and I2 property owners an ability to use their land until such time that there is some interest in it. On the overhead, I have the extent of what's proposed. We have amendments to correct various scriven errors, which I'll show you a flavor for that. An amendment to define the corridor setback and address housekeeping matters. So there was one additional amendment that we've tacked on to this board mandate just to clarify how we measure the corridor setback for self-storage facilities. And then there's the actual main amendment, which we'll talk about in just a minute. So this is the self-storage facility design standards. These are all the corridors that a lot of these guidelines in Section 1105 apply to, specifically the area that we're talking about in this amendment here. There it is. Who's driving it? Me or you?
You.
Okay. So this is what the area we're talking about here. North of State Road 52, essentially up until this point where Shady Hills crosses Sun Coast Parkway. So it's a very narrowly defined code amendment to enable the various I1 and C3 properties that are along the Sun Coast additional opportunity for RV boat storage. Next slide. This slide is illustrating just the flavor of some of the scriven errors that are being adjusted throughout Section 1105. It's basically spelling out the word section, that sort of thing. 1105.4 is illustrating the definition for the corridor measurement. So when we're talking about being setback from a corridor, we're talking about measuring from the right-of-way line into the private property areas. So that's there for clarification. That was always the intent and how things were implemented previously. It's just being clarified in the ordinance. And then this is the actual proposed ordinance.
Can you go back to that real quick, Terry? Just a quick, for clarification. So you measure it from the right-of-way. Does that mean from the existing right-of-way or any proposed right-of-way? Sometimes they have to give right-of-way because of the corridor preservation.
It's going to be from the proposed right-of-way. If there is that sort of dual right-of-way scenario where we know where the proposed right-of-way line is, it's gonna be from that point because the intent is to preserve the right-of-way frontages for employment generating uses. So.
Well, Terry, if that's the case, you may want to say the, from the edge of the transportation corridor or something instead of right-of-way because of Mr. Moody's point, that could be construed as either existing right-of-way or future. So you might want to just come out and say, Brad, you gonna say something?
Yeah, I have a recommendation. Can we use the term the ultimate right-of-way based on the trip generate, or based on the comprehensive plan tables?
I'm okay with that too, but if you just use the existing term, you're gonna have the ambiguity that Mr. Moody prefers.
Yeah, we could change that, add the word ultimate.
Is that the word that's actually used in the comp plan, Brad, ultimate?
Well, yes, and it's, just because depending on the rough proportionality, some of it may be preserved, some of it may be dedicated with a particular project that comes in. So the right-of-way kind of ends up in different places over time. But we want to measure this from where that ultimate will be so that in the future, that frontage is preserved.
So why don't we just say that we'll use the term that's in the comp plan? I don't know if it, we get the point, but I think they just need to research what the exact term is.
That's fine, I'm good with that.
Okay. So the amendment to Section 1105 that the board mandated in January is what's on the screen, is number three there. It's adding, it's first clarifying within 250 feet of the corridor to make it consistent with the image that I showed previously. There was a typo in the text. But also to add the following sentences. So it describes the area that I just showed on the map. Along the Sun Coast Parkway for the segment of that transit corridor that is north of State Road 52 and within the urban service area, open RV boat storage may be allowed as a special exception within the 250-foot corridor setback if the parcel or that portion of the parcel is zoned C3, the name of C3, I1, the name I2. All required landscaping and screening may be more stringent than required by the Land Development Code by virtue of special exception conditions. The special exception use may be time limited, the sunset that I mentioned earlier. And so that's the language that was presented to the Board of County Commissioners to which they agreed that we should make it move through the process.
Seems probably like that might be a great way to handle car washes too.
We request that the LPA find the proposed ordinance amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan and recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners.
So moved.
Terry, have a second.
I'll second.
Further discussion.
There's a big difference between RV and boat storage and car washes, you do know that.
Right.
RV and boat storage is very easy to remove as an interim use compared to a car wash.
Well, make it a conditional use. Maybe you could have some provisions to demolish them if they become abandoned for a certain amount of time. But we'll discuss that in another hearing.
We'll get to that in a hearing. I'm just saying that I think there's a good rationale for how they're handling RV and boat storage because it's an easy use to reverse in the future.
Well, certain metal buildings that are just bolted to the ground aren't hard to rebuild.
We have a motion in a second.
We already continued that item. Yeah.
Public comment.
Public comment.
Do we have a public comment? Do we have a public?
Barbara may want to say something.
Or Clark.
No. You have a date certain, Barbara? Clark, nothing?
No, I'm good.
No, okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? All right.
Thank you.
We should have started with that one. David.
Mr. Chair.
We need to get you up there more often, you're quick.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
If that's the way you want to be. Terry, have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Pasco County waterways and wildlife depend on you to keep them healthy. Excess fertilizer, grass clippings, trash, oils, and pet waste wash into gutters and storm drains when it rains. Stormwater carries these pollutants directly into our lakes and rivers, creating an unhealthy environment for fish, waterfowl, and other aquatic animals. Storm drains are meant for clean rainwater. Most other discharges are illegal. If you suspect an illicit discharge, please contact Pasco County Department of Public Works at 700-888-9222.